Can you hear me, Leila?
I can. You're frozen on my screen, but I can hear you. I feel like maybe there's some issues just in Manzanita. I'm not sure what's happening.
All right now, you look okay. We can hear you and you're moving around and your picture's there, so.
Okay, well, you're frozen in a really cool way right now on my screen, so.
Am I moving around for the rest of you guys?
No, you're not frozen on my screen. Are we all frozen?
I kinda.
Nah. Did you say?
Now I lost everybody. I don't know. It'll probably clear itself up. This has happened before, but I'd just be comfortable knowing Linda's our backup. So for folks that are here, if we end up having to switch, we'll just be back to the same link. So I apologize. Bit out of our hands. Okay.
Are we ready to start, do you think?
So I can log in.
Linda, I think you're muted.
I think she's talking to Leila real quick on the phone.
Oh, okay. Let's just wait a minute here, see if we can sort this out before we get started, I guess.
She may have bandwidth to support audio only if she doesn't have enough bandwidth for video and audio.
Okay, we should be good. Linda will, Linda's logged into our Zoom account, so should Nina and I get cut, the meeting should still continue because Linda's in there. And if not, Linda will log back in. So I apologize in advance. Oh, and Josh, our IT guy is also gonna log in as host.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
So, okay, so we'll be sorted. I apologize. I just want to make sure that the meeting doesn't get interrupted because of our, I think it's just affecting City Hall right now because it's just Nina and I, but her.
And Leila, you might want to, if you get logged off, phone in.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Well, let's try to launch this ship and see if we don't sink. We're three minutes late. I'm gonna call the monthly council workshop to order. I want to remind everybody, this is a council workshop and we're, today we're gonna discuss the future of short-term rentals here in Manzanita. No decisions are gonna be made, and this is not a public hearing, or do I anticipate that we're taking public comment? This, but the public certainly welcome to listen in. This is a discussion between the city council members. So with that, I just want to start out and make a few comments. And then we'll open it up. We'll just start talking about things. I kind of asked, Leila, I talked about this, put this topic on the agenda. I know we kind of got off to, off track and off to a goofy start last month at the city council meeting. We were trying to form the short-term rental committee, and I thought this would be a good idea just for us to get, to just talk about this topic, which obviously is a big topic in town. It always is. And so I just want a few things I want to say. We all know that we're in a big economic building boom right now. Everybody sees that there's building going on all over town. And we all have concerns about the increases in short-term rental licenses with this expansion of growth. You know, we went through this once before in the mid 2000, but when the housing market collapsed in 2008 and we had the so-called Great Recession, it really slowed up and we had at least a decade of limited growth here. But right now, we're going through a building boom that is really broader and more intense than that one was in the mid 2000s. I know everybody knows there's virtually no houses for sale in Manzanita. And when, and when one does come up for sale, it seems to sell almost immediately for a very high price. And the houses that you see being built around town, they've already all been sold. So, you know, all economic booms end. They don't go on forever. And we're faced with some issues right now, which may or may not impact this, this boom that we're in. I think everybody knows that interest rates are going up. We have inflation right now at a 40-year-high. Stock market had a decent day-to-day, but it's down over 20%. And by definition, we're now in a bear market with the stock market. And if you go fill your car up with gas, you know, we're at an all-time-high right now with gas prices. And they're undoubtedly gonna go higher because of what's going on with Russia's now invaded Ukraine, which is 24/7 on the news. And what's scary about that is, you know, if one person makes a mistake, we can find ourselves in World War III, which might even involve nuclear weapons. It's a very scary time. Only time will tell if these events are gonna have any impact on all list development that we have going on here in town, but time will tell. So we currently don't have anybody on our waiting list for short-term rentals, which I find curious because for years, we've had a long waiting list. People have waited as long as a year and a half, or at one time, I think even got up to two years. We have a few open licenses, which, which means at this point, somebody could just walk in and get a license. And I asked Judy Wilson, who handles that piece of the business for the city, why is that? And she says, well, a lot of people gave up their licenses during COVID because they didn't want strangers in their house. And, and people now are paying such large dollar amounts for homes, and mostly their cash. And it's not mortgages involved. And anyway, they're paying so much for these properties, they're not buying them, turning them into rentals. I don't, it's the only explanation I could come up with. So the question is, I guess, what action can we take to kind of rein things in a little bit? And I'm just gonna run through a couple of things here, and I'd be interested in everybody's input. First of all, I think it's really important in a time like this that everyone in the community, that we all stand together and try to work towards common goals and solutions. Second, I'm not opposed, opposed to freezing our net new licenses for a year or even longer if we have to. Do we can get our arms around things? And third, we need to attack this problem. And we're gonna be forming the short-term rental committee, permanent committee, that we approved last month. We didn't, we still have to go through the process of, of forming the committee tonight at our council meeting. There's a lot of issues. I mean, that committee is gonna work for us. They're not gonna make any decisions. They don't have any legislative power. We're gonna tell them what to look at and bring us the recommendations. And only the council is gonna take any action. But I can see us putting them to work and trying to solve these concentration issues with short-term rentals. How do you deal with short-term rentals and the subdivisions that we see building up around town? How do you deal with short-term rentals? Our homeowners association decides there's no short-term rentals in their homeowners association. Things of that nature. And as I say, we'll, we'll finish up that action on forming that committee tonight. And Leila is going to form a, basically a subcommittee, I believe, out of the budget committee, to study alternative sources of income for the city, because as everybody knows, we are very dependent on this income. We have one of the lowest property tax rates in the state of Oregon. I believe we only take in about $250,000 in, in property tax. And we are heavily dependent on short-term rental tax right now around the city. So that group will be looking at alternative sources where we can find some alternative income. So we got some other factors which are kind of beyond our control, which I just have to mention. I don't know if you saw the annual attendance numbers for the state park. It was on the parks. It was reported on the front page of Sunday Oregon, you know, a week ago, Sunday. But the fourth most visited park in Oregon is Oswald West. And they had a million and a half visitors last year for a record. And then we have the Haylen Bay State Park to the south of us, and their attendance last year was 700,000. So there is 2.2 million people that are here in our area, and undoubtedly, some of them worked their way into our town. So they do have an impact on our community. The, you also probably know that the Haylen Bay State Park is going to be enacting their master plan and expanding by roughly 50% the number of campsites they have down there starting this summer. They haven't had any campsites to that park since it was built in the 1970s. And so they're gonna be expanding. And, you know, it's not all short-term rentals, which is impacting the people that are in town here. We have a huge number of second homeowners. It's about 80% of our housing stock. And those people come down regularly, even though they're not renting their house, they live in this community, they pay property tax, they own homes, and they have an impact on the community. If this building boom doesn't slow down, we could be faced with a couple of new motels, hotels in our community, which is gonna add more people. The, and one last item, I don't know how this is gonna impact us, but as you probably know, Cannon Beach has imposed a 5% food tax, which goes into effect July 1st. I don't know if that'll drive people to come down here because they don't charge a sales tax. I don't know if that'll have any impact at all, but it's, it's just a new interesting wrinkle to all this, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts, so I opened it up. Let's, I thought we could just have an open discussion here. And I'd be interested in what you think about possibly putting a freeze on our licenses for a while. Steve, I'm gonna call on you first, since you're in the successful short-term rental work group and know a lot about this subject. So I'll let you jump in first.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did have a couple of comments that I'd like to make to start us out because I think it's important that we look back a little bit in terms of what we've done in the past and how we've arrived at where we are. Ironically, it's exactly one year ago today that the Short-Term Rental Work Group made their presentation to the council on March the 9th of 2021. And at that presentation, and that report is still available on the city website, and I would encourage those that have not looked at it to look at it because it does have a lot of information about short-term rental activities in the community and some strategies. There actually were 17 strategies that were identified by the Short-Term Rental Work Group on how to improve livability in the community. Also, and that process actually started in October of 2019. And combined with the COVID response and the short-term rental issues, we had 20 or 30 meetings over the course of that period between October of 19 and, and March of 2021. It's, I think it's important to understand that the Short-Term Rental Work Group, when it was organized in 2019, was given direction by the council to do specific things. And those specific things were to identify strategies within ordinance 10-3, which is the ordinance that controls short-term rentals, both from an administrative standpoint and also from a livability, certain portions of it control, contain livability issues or livability standards. I think it's also important to understand that in 2010, the council at the time removed a number of issues that one could argue were livability items, like parking and some other issues. And so I guess the long and the short of it is that that work group worked for pretty hard for 18 months. Came back with 17 strategies, which included new standards for parking, controlling the parking, creating a parking plans. You know, controlling the amount of parking that can occur on public streets. Came back with standards on noise and noise abatement that ultimately were approved citywide for, which we didn't have any noise standards, believe it or not, prior to that. Or at least we didn't have a consistent noise standard across all ordinance platforms. And we also identified a whole lot of issues relative to things that we were not essentially permitted to review. And that includes things like density, that included things like looking at the cap because that's in an entirely different ordinance. And so we, at every single meeting, I can't remember a meeting where it didn't come up as an issue about, well, this is something we need to deal with. So I want, and I want to close by, first of all, thanking once again, and I've done it many times, the work group that worked because that put this all together because they did, I thought, a very admirable job of identifying issues and coming up with the 17 strategies to improve. And many of those strategies are in, are either in place or, or becoming in place, like parking, for example. I noticed across the street from my home where the owners put out parking flags to get a permit to their three-year inspection. And so parking over the course of the next three years, because all short-term rentals are required to be inspected now, every three years, over the course of the three years, we're going to see a significant improvement in parking standards in, in the community. So I guess for me, I don't want to oversimplify, but I also don't want to make this more, more difficult than it can be. The Short-Term Rental Work Group was created. It did its job. I thought it did a great job. Unfortunately, over the last year, it's been kind of hovering or treading water as we work through some other issues in the city. But tonight, we're going to reappoint, if you will, or appoint, reconstitute the, the work group or the committee with new people, or maybe there's some existing people. They know what needs to get done. And so I think if we elect them, follow our lead and create the kind of standards that we're looking for, including density, including, including any other issues that can control the growth of short-term rentals, then I think, you know, that's gonna really help us. I don't particularly have a problem with putting a moratorium, if that's what we want to call it. As long as that moratorium has been reviewed and it's acceptable in terms of any risk potential that might be, that the city might incur by having that from a legal standpoint. So that's what I have to say. So thank you.
Well, I want to thank you guys again, Steve, for your work group. That was a very effective committee. You guys got a lot of stuff done, but we got more work to do, and that's why we obviously decided to reconstitute a permanent committee. Keep working on these issues because issues just keep coming up, so. Anybody else want to jump in here with a comment? Aons, how do you feel about doing a freeze on the licenses?
Well, I want to clarify, I'm assuming you mean that we would have a hard cap, basically, at the number of licenses and not stop issuing replacement licenses. In other words, if, if three homes sell over the next six months that all have a license, those three would be available to, to be, you know, reissued. But we would have a hard cap and we would not have a higher gross number of licenses. I wouldn't want to do something that's revenue negative, especially as we come into our budget cycle. But I'm, I'm supportive of of putting a hard cap on the, on the net number of licenses that we have. That being said, I'm, I'm a firm believer in property rights. I'm very concerned when the government takes away property rights. I'm aware of potential liability when those rights are taken away. So I want to, I want to, you know, walk carefully around those issues. But I'm also very grateful for the work that that committee did, and I think that it brought a much higher level of enforcement to those who have licenses and how they act with those licenses. I think that we were responding to a lot of community outcry at the time about under-the-table rentals and about parking behaviors and those kinds of things. And clearly, there will always be more to do and new and increasing, you know, issues coming up, which may not always be easy to differentiate between short-term renters and day trippers. It's kind of my term for the people that flood in here. Yeah, I'm, as much as I'm a firm believer in property rights, I'm also an adherent to ordinance and proponent of ordinance. But especially when they're enforced. An ordinance without enforcement is a suggestion. I don't know who told that. It's not my quote. That's where I'm at. Let, let's enforce good ordinances that are, that are, you know, achieved through work, through committee and public input. And I'm, I'm fine with having a hard cap for the, for an indefinite period of time. I just, I don't want to go backward and do something that's gonna hit us from a revenue side.
Well, I think the thought was a freeze at a firm cap. So your three houses that had licenses and gave them up, they could be reassigned to somebody else. So wait, I'm, that's what's going through my head, anyway. Well, you know, we, we've been really fortunate in this town. We've had this short-term rental program going for about 30 years now. And houses were being rented here before that, but the city was just not licensing them and weren't charging any taxes. And we have this 17.5% cap, which, as everybody knows, I think when we started licensing short-term rentals, people came in and got a license. And when everybody that came in and got their license, it was 17.5%. And we've maintained that number now for, as I say, almost 30 years. But the city has grown a lot. There's a lot more homes here, as I said earlier, a lot of second homeowners here, which increase the number of licenses that we have. But we've never been challenged on this. We've been fair, I think. And if we don't do something drastic, we won't be challenged on it. I, I don't want to get challenged to the point where somebody comes in here and takes legal action and all of a sudden, we find out we don't have a cap at all. And, and yet, you know, Leila, do you have that sheet that you showed me of how the license, the numbers on how the licenses have changed over the last 20 years? I thought that was pretty instructive.
I can pull that up.
Sure, buddy. I think Judy put this together, how the number of licenses have changed over the last 20 years, year by year. And you can, you can clearly see the growth periods. The 2000s and what we're going through now. There's another interesting thing. Back in, in 2006, we included, or not 2006, yeah, I think it was 2006. We included the special recreation zone that I live in was not included in the cap originally for the first 10 years of the program. And then we, we added the houses, those, these are the houses around the golf course, were included into the calculation. And everybody that was renting at that time, as I remember, if you had a rental license, you were grandfathered. But anyway.
Let me see, I'm gonna share my screen here in a moment. Hang on a second. Sorry, it's opening up in a, I'm having a bad technology day. One thing I will mention, since I think Council Nuttall brought it up, I did have a short conversation with the city attorney about this. And the only concern, I mean, there's, there's some, but the, so long as we are not reducing, that isn't seen as a taking. So it could be seen as a taking, and that increases our risk for a legal challenge. So putting a hard cap on the existing licenses presents less of a risk for a duration as well. Just thought I'd share that. Okay.
Well, we don't have a big backlog right now either, which makes it, you're gonna freeze on.
Just for clarification, when you talk about a hard cap, does that mean the 17.5%? Or does that mean we, what does, can you be specific about what that means?
Sure. And it might be helpful, actually, if I can show you this slide where I have all the numbers on there.
Okay.
Adobe is popping up here. Oh, I just. Sorry, bear with me. I got a new computer. This is also part of the deal, so like retraining.
Yeah. I think we've all been there.
Yeah, thank you. Do you see the short-term rental licenses?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I think Judy's on the call too, so she can chime in here. But just to talk about what we're talking about, so there are currently 260 total. So that's the number of total licenses for short-term rentals. Just so folks know, 25 are in the C1 or R4 zone, which are technically uncapped, and 235 are in the capped zone. So of those 235, as the mayor mentioned, 231 are in use, which means we have four available permits and we don't have a waiting list. One thing I'd like to highlight is that when we brought in the SRR zone into the capped zone, there are still five remaining permits that were grandfathered in because those were issued through the uncapped. So when those owners decide to no longer renew those licenses, they just go away. So while we currently have 260 total licenses, when those five go away, we have 255. So the hard cap would be kind of 255 plus those five grandfathered. And then when they go away, the hard cap is 255.
Okay.
Does that mean, does that help?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay. And then here is kind of the short-term rental licenses that have been added since we started collecting data, which was 2003. So you can see the chart here. We average between one and two mostly, but as the mayor mentioned, big boom in the early 2000s. We saw another increase, kind of four was the max that we saw in 20, I think that's 13. And then last year, we issued seven. So that, if you recall from Scott's presentation a couple of months ago, we have had a lot of housing permits. I think there were 47 issued that year. So, so that's where that is. But you can see the kind of trend has generally been about one a year. That's not the case for this year.
Willie. Can I ask you, Leila, of the, we have 235, 235 in the cap zone. Off the top of your head, or maybe someone else, their staff knows, but the total number of residential structures or occupancies that we have in Manzanita. I guess we could do the reverse math, but.
Yeah, it would be about 17.5%.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what the total number of, hold on, I have another chart here, probably.
I was thinking we're at 1,500 or 1,700 homes, somewhere in that, based on water usage or water hookups.
I think that's pretty close.
Yeah, I can look into it and send out a, an accurate number, but I think that's correct.
I think, I just think it may be more understandable or more representative if we compare the number of licenses that we issue at 17.5% versus the number of actual residences that we have.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Yeah, all we've been tracking is the number of housing units added over the last in our spreadsheet. So we can look into that and find out what the number of housing units are in those zones. That's a great point.
I'd like to pick up on Steve's point because I agree with what's been said so far about favoring a hardening of the cap. I think we have two very significant areas of study to conduct in the immediate future. One on the density issues and other livability issues regarding STRs and their impact on neighborhoods. And then the other, considering alternative revenue sources that could help lessen our dependence on STR revenue. With regard to the, the first set of issues, the, the impact on neighborhoods, when we think of the math, 17.5% sounds like a pretty gentle number. But given the number of STRs we have, that does amount to three STRs for every four full-time residents in the community, full-time households in the community. And since the majority of STRs are clustered in the same parts of town where most full-time residents live, it doesn't feel like 17.5% in a lot of our neighborhoods. It's, it's more of a three STRs, the four full-time households ratio. And so for that reason alone, I think the, the new STRs. And so for that reason alone, I think the, the new STR committee has a big job on its hand, and I'm really looking forward to that committee helping us figure out what we can do about density. I applaud everything that the work group did to help fine tune the ordinance and make some adjustments to the ordinance. But I think this next round takes that group to a significantly new level and, and is going to have it working on issues that are going to be more fundamental to the, the livability question. If we're somehow able to figure out how to redistribute the STRs over time so that if we're all going to, if we're all going to share in the benefits of the revenue, we probably all need to share more equitably in the burdens of the, of the impact on, on livability. So anyway, that's a big job. And then a, a second, but equally big job is figuring out if there are other ways for us to help pay our bills instead of relying as heavily as we do on short-term rental money. The mayor mentioned how modest our property tax take is. I think this year it's going to amount to just about one-fifth, I think, of what we're going to take in on short-term rental revenue, which is a, that's nobody's fault at this table or in, or in the audience, but it's, it's not a good situation. It's a situation that has prepped up and developed over a long period of time. And I, I think most of us agree that it's, it's a situation that probably isn't sustainable or, or shouldn't be ignored much further. So, so we got a lot of work to do to try to figure out where else to, to get revenue from. And these two separate but related processes, the STR livability work and the alternate revenue source work. If they can go on over the course of the next year or two or three, while we basically call a timeout and harden the cap, I think that gives us an opportunity to undertake some serious policy considerations without worsening the, the situation that we're, we're currently in. And I do want to just note, because I think, I certainly agree with Hans, we don't want to do something that's going to put us in a hole. But it is important for folks to, in a community, to realize that over the past four years, we've budgeted, we've expected to receive by, by our budgets, $2.8 million about in short-term rental revenue, and we've actually taken in 4.2 million. So yes, that means that we budget conservatively. That's great. But the bottom line is we're not, we're not putting ourselves at fiscal risk right now by calling a timeout. But we, we have far exceeded what we've expected to come in the last four years. And I think this gives us an opportunity, along with the fact that there's no waiting list right now, to call this timeout and give us a chance to do the, the hard work that we need to on livability and on alternative revenue sources. And I, I'm pretty sure, and I would, I guess you've already addressed it, Leila, I'm pretty sure that the the risk of exposure in terms of potential taking issues has been looked at pretty carefully by our attorney. I mean, I would like to, I, I agree with Hans, and I think most folks in the community would agree that we all put a premium on personal property rights. But in this instance, we're talking about a right that we, the city created. We created a regulated industry and issued permits. And so we're talking about adjusting something that we did. It's not an inherent right to own property and operate a short-term rental. And so I think we're on safe ground. And obviously, as long as we move cautiously and with our attorney's advice, I, I think, I think we we're on, we're on safe ground. You can't, can't prevent someone from suing you whether they have a good cause or not. So that may or may not be our fate at some point, but I think it's time for, for us to take a hard look at whether or not we can make some adjustments that both balance our, our fiscal strategies going forward and accommodate some of our community's concerns about livability.
Yeah, Jerry, there's. You're right, you know, the, the spread between the property tax and the short-term rental tax year after year has gotten bigger and bigger because the short-term rental taxes are the property taxes capped at 3% a year. So that spread just keeps growing. But yeah, I think, I think it sounds like we're all on the same page. I think we can deal with these concentration issues and some of these other issues we talked about. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take some time, but I think we can figure it out. And Linda, do you have any thoughts? I haven't called on you yet to see what you have to say. I think you're on mute.
No, I think this has been a really productive conversation. I, I agree with both the comments Hans made and the comments Jerry made. I, I guess I'm curious about the, we've talked about what's the work that Steve has done with this committee, and I think it's kind of taken us to a new level addressing the issues that we've all put forward. I'm, I'm curious about the enforcement part of that. How are we looking at that? What are, what kind of systems have we set up? Is that going to be part of the short-term rental committee? Or is that, how does that work, I guess?
Can I say something about that real quick, Mayor? Because you've hit on something that's incredibly important. And the committee or the work group, one of the highlights of the work groups was that we needed to improve our field enforcement efforts. And so far, we haven't been able to do that to any real measure, other than the building officials doing the inspections. But what the committee and the work group wanted to do was to provide some level of oversight during, particularly during the season, where someone would be out in the field doing that work. So far, we haven't been able to accomplish that, but you will be hearing about it, at least from me, as we begin our budget process here in the next month or two. I really, really strongly believe that we need to have, at least from a seasonal perspective, a person in the field working on these issues, parking issues, noise issues, licensing issues, safety issues. I can go on and on. And until you have eyes on the ground that are focused and dedicated to that purpose, you'll never really have an effective enforcement effort. So I hope that the council, the rest of the council can concur, particularly as we get into the budget. But we have had, as we've suggested, a surplus of short-term rental or TLT monies over the past several years. And I think we should take a portion of that. We're talking not a lot of money here. We're talking about somebody during the summertime. Basically, a part-time employee to help us enforce some of the provisions. And, and I think we need to do that. And can I also say real quickly too, that we need to be a little careful here when we talk about the revenue? Because we're down five, we're down five short-term rental licenses right now. And that will have an impact on our total revenue for the year. But a lot of it depends on which rentals actually, you know, are off the market. We also purposely, particularly during the COVID years, underestimated our TLT monies by up to 30%. And that was intentional because we didn't know how much money we were going to get based upon what, you know, we shut down short-term rentals for a period of time. And we didn't know going forward how much money we were actually going to generate. So some of those numbers that we're reflecting on right now are a bit artificial. And we do need to be careful about monitoring that. I know Leila and her group, Nina and her group are monitoring that very closely. But I just wanted to say that some of that we did on, with intent. And what the revenues do going into the future, you know, are going to be based upon what circumstances happen. So anyway. Thank you. I, again, let's get somebody out in the field. It's, it's really an important aspect of the work at the short-term rental work we did.
Well, I, I agree with you, Stephen. I, I think part of the confidence of the community will be to see that what we've set forward works, that, that we're responding to the issues that surface. And I think that will give us a great deal more credibility as we talk about the needs of the short-term rental. Because certainly there's a lot of issues out there right now.
I would just offer a couple of comments to that, just to kind of give folks some perspective as I'm working on the budget right now. And the part-time enforcement officer has been brought to my attention as well. There are a couple of issues with that that are resolvable, but will take some time and effort. First is we don't have space to put somebody. We're pretty much maxed out with the space that we have. The second is bringing someone in to do that kind of enforcement does require that they are authorized to issue things like citations. So for example, Judy is a sworn, is sworn in so that she can issue those citations. So there's a good deal of, you know, training and onboarding that has to happen. So, you know, in my mind, having a permanent position probably makes more sense because I agree, I think from a budget perspective, a part-time position in the summer is better. But I just want to put that out there that we really are space constrained. We could probably work around that to some extent, but at this point we are bursting at the seams. And bringing somebody on board, the cost to bring somebody on board for a few months, I think outweighs the benefits of having them with the required training and licensing that they would need in order to do this work. The third thing is, and I would agree that, you know, our budget looks pretty good. We, I think, are very solidly situated financially. I think I talked to you about that as we started talking about taking on debt service for New City Hall. I feel confident as I'm working through the budget that we will be able to accommodate whatever debt service that we can afford, that we will be able to. We also have a salary survey that's underway that is council-directed every four years. And we are dealing with the highest inflation we have seen in 40 years. Those are going to have massive impacts on our budget. I still think that we are well-positioned to have a freeze and maintain current service levels with that cap. But adding additional services to our current service levels, I'm uncomfortable with at this point. I don't have enough information to be super solid in that because I'm still working through the budget process. But I just want the council to be cognizant of that, that we are well-settled to deal with kind of current service levels. If there's an increase in those service levels, then we really should be talking about other sources of revenue. So one thing that came to my mind is, you know, the operator fee is an option that we could attach that would help potentially cover some of that cost. It has no increase on the number of short-term rentals. But that's just one example. So I just want to make sure everyone's really clear on that, that we're good to go. But we also want to maintain, you know, a good savings account so that should things become volatile, we have at least six months of savings for general operations. And so I don't want to put us at risk to that. So I'm super glad that we've seen such good returns in terms of the TLT. But I think sort of taking on the, and continuing the tradition of conservative budgeting, I don't want to get super excited about those, those funds either. I think we need to think conservatively as we move forward, particularly if we're going to be putting a cap on, which I just want to be clear, I think is prudent and I, I support, but with those, those caveats.
You know, that, on the licensing fee situation, we, we have not adjusted our fee to be in compliance or in, in align with the county. Toma County, I, I think we needed to take a look at that. And the, the fees that they, licensing fee they charge at Cannon Beach also is significantly higher than what we charge for our short-term rentals. I don't see there's any reason why we do that. And that's certainly a source of income we could dedicate to a compliance person if we felt so. But anyway, I just throw that out there. Anybody else got anything? It, it sounds like we got consensus to direct Leila to put something together for next month to put in a freeze. I haven't heard anybody say, I hate that. But we're not going to make that decision here today. We're just talking about it, but she could put something together with James and, and we can get that going.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask Leila to comment a little bit more, in more depth on? My understanding is that James suggested a, a sunset that would be probably enough time for us, more, more than enough time for us to do the, the, the work that needs to be done on, on density and on alternative revenue sources. And that would give us not only the time to do that work with the cap frozen, but it would also presumably give us some significant data from the capped years or the frozen capped years to get a better sense of, you know, it, it may well be revenue could go up because, you know, it's even if you don't have more STR units, you may have more nights of occupancy, or you may have higher rates, which would generate higher tax revenue. So we don't really know until we go through a period of two or three years of the hardened cap, what that really means. But was James telling us that we should tie this work to the timeframe of the hardened cap?
Yes, yeah, I think between, I think a minimum of 12 months and a maximum of 36 was his recommendation.
So if we did a motion, should we, are we going to have to decide on a particular timeframe, do you think? Or, oh, you can work on that. We're not going to make that decision here today, but I think you know where our heads are at on this thing. We just put it out.
As importantly, Mayor, we, and Leila's already described this, but we really need to be concise in terms of what we're doing with that time period. Can't just, you know, so, you know, that's going to be some of the strategy about what we can accomplish. Density, we looked at it for a year. It's not easy. There, I mean, it's very complex. If it was easy, everybody would have done it. A few communities have successfully, and while others have tried and failed. So it's going to be really critical about how we define what we're asking this work group or committee to, to do going forward. I, you know, I know from personal experience, 24 months is at least the minimum. And honestly, probably 36 is probably more appropriate by the time we go through the process. And look at all the options and try to implement things from a phase standpoint, so.
Well, I, I agree, Steve. This is going to be some tough work and you just can't do it in six months. The time flies so fast. The, probably as much time as we can put on this thing. And the best, of course, we're going to have to give this committee some clear direction on what we want them to do. And we're going to have to monitor what they're doing. So. And we can do that. We've done it before. So.
Hey, just real quick to answer Councilor Nuttall's question, we have 1,317 housing units. And that's what we're using to calculate the seventeen and a half percent. So that's 230 units. And then I talked about those five grandfathered ones that are outside of that.
So everybody knows that number of housing units in a traditional community that has a, you know, full-time residency that's hired in Manzanita represents about 3,000 to 4,000 people that normally would occupy a community that has that many housing units. So we're kind of have an interesting thing here where we have all these housing units, but our population hovers it. Whatever it is now.
600 something.
I think it's probably higher than that because of the last year or two, but it's just, I always think we need to reflect on the, that's actually the workload that gets created. Because even though they're not full-time residents, they're often here. I have a number of people on my protective or street that wouldn't consider themselves to be full-time residents, but they actually exist in Manzanita more days than they exist in their other residence. So that just generates workload for our staff and for the community. And we shouldn't forget that. We, I'm going to be on a little bit of a soapbox here and say that I think we do, the staff does remarkable work for the number of staff, for the number of people, the number of houses that we deal with.
That, that's such a hard number to put your arms around. I mean, but the bottom line is we're not a city of 600 people as far as city services and which they have to provide. We have so many people that live adjacent to us that are in town all the time. And we talked about the people that are visiting the state parks and so forth. I mean, we really got 5,000 or 6,000 people wandering around here all the time. And but it's, it's just hard to put a firm number on it. We're a unique, diverse community.
So two things, Mike, we.
So two things, Mike, we, we got a, we got a email from a, a person in this area that asked why we are still focused on the 70, 30 in the TLT. Would you speak to that? I, there's some good history with that. And if you could clarify where we are on that, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, we got really lucky when we started our licensing and taxing program here in the city in the mid 1990s. Because most of our revenue is grandfathered from that 70, 30 split and goes directly into our general fund. Most communities that started licensing and taxing short-term rentals did it after the effective date. And I can't remember that date. But the state passed a law that 70% of your tax has to go for promotion of future tourism and only 30% can go to your general fund. And this was driven by that industry. My predecessor, Gary Bullard, I know, to Salem and testified against this. We've, Senator Betsy Johnson has been on our team to try to change that formula. I went down and testified against it once. I, I felt like I was hitting my head against a piece of concrete. I mean, they got that locked up so tight that to get that changed, at least right now, there's no chance. So the revenue is split, 70% go, has to be used for promotion of tourism and 30% can be used in the general fund. Which, when you're in a community like ours where we feel like we're at a saturation point, why would we want to spend a bunch more money trying to attract more people down here? They seem to be financed in it all by themselves. And so again, we're lucky, the majority of our income, I think the first, correct me if I'm wrong, Leila, I'm taking this off the top of my cuff. I think 7%, the first 7% all goes to the general fund for us. That was a tax we had in place when this law went into effect. But anyway, if we had the ability to change it, I'd change it in a minute. But we just haven't been able to, to do it. Anyway.
Mike?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted a point of clarification. It's perhaps the only good thing if it, and I don't know that it's necessarily good, but it's better than having to promote tourism with that money. That money can go towards tourist facilities. And fortunately, there are tourist facilities that can benefit the local community. And I think that that's kind of been an effort in the way of the visitor center and public restrooms there and maybe other potential projects going forward that it, it's great that it's not just tourism promotion that we have to do with those funds, that we can use them for facilities. So I think that's the only saving grace or the, the best tack for us to take in getting local benefit from those tax dollars.
We did build a center and the restrooms at the beach with the restricted funds. And Leila and I were just talking about that today, I think. Do you want to speak to that? Because we're, we're trying to figure out some other uses for those funds that'll benefit the overall community. You want to talk to that, Leila?
Sure, I don't have anything definitive to offer, but one of the other things I've been working on for budget is looking at how other jurisdictions have applied the TLT restricted funds and other opportunities for us to use that to cover, you know, tourist-related costs. So for example, I have a part-time public works person whose sole job is to maintain tourist facilities. There are other ways that the county, for example, has been using the money that we haven't in the past. So Trails, for example, and others. So I'm working with the city attorney right now to sort of, I've asked him a series of questions about how we can potentially use those resources to help support the existing industry that we have and facilities that we have. And so I expect to get some of that back and certainly we'll be presenting that throughout the budget process. So I'm doing my best to see how we can utilize those resources to the greatest extent that we can. The other thing I wanted to mention and remind folks is that we're working with the Tillamook County Visitors Association to do a destination management plan. One of the things that they have learned and that they've worked with a couple of other communities, Rockaway and Process of Garibaldi, is looking at, and they've had some success with using the resources to do this, which is to say, we're not trying to promote tourism, how do we manage tourism? And so I'll be looking to establish sort of an ad hoc, so a limited duration committee to help oversee that effort that TCVA will be working with us on. And so ideally, the outcome of that will be actions that we can take, that we can use those restricted funds to help manage the impacts that tourism has on our community. Because that's, it's significant. So I'm working really hard on that. I've been just dogged to the city attorney and to others. And I expect that we'll be able to apply those resources a little differently than we have in the past. But just making sure that we're doing it in a prudent way that is in line with, with, with the law. So working on that, feeling good about some aspects of it. So I hope to have some good news to report as we move forward with the budget process.
Anybody else have any other comments on this issue? I think we all, we have a plan and we, I think we understand the problem. And we'll go forward, hopefully we'll go forward with the freeze next month. It's only four minutes to four. We have over 80 people on this call today. I, if everybody's okay with this, I think, why don't we open up the phones and takes a public comment? This is a hot issue with everybody and we'll take 15 or 20 minutes here. And here, if anybody has some suggestions for us.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I also suggest, we got 80 people. I don't know how many of the 80 want to say something. I would suspect a number of them. Can we publish an email address that they could write to us directly about this issue? I don't know, Leila, if you have that available? Maybe, maybe show it on the screen because I think everybody should have the opportunity to provide some insight and input. I just don't think 80 people are going to have a chance to talk today. So I don't want anybody to go away and feel like they weren't heard. And I don't want to read it on social media. I want them to send an email to us and tell us and give us their thoughts.
And then it becomes, which is really important too.
Yeah. We like that too, because I think, as many of you know, I don't, I don't use social media. So I like people to get information to and from the source. So people can use the City Hall email. So those get filtered by staff and could get sent to me. So that's cityhall@ci.manzanita.or.us. And I'll, you're challenging my technical skills, Councilor Nettles. I'll put it into a Word document here in a second and put it up on the screen for everyone. Mayor, before we start inviting folks to provide comment, I just did want to make a point that we have disabled the chat function. So I know council was the only folks that could see that chat function. It was, I think, distracting to a number of counselors. So just for folks that are watching, that function's not available. But you can raise your hand and then we can bring you over into the panel and you can speak directly to the city council. So I think, oh, go ahead.
So you're going to put together an email address to everybody hearing a little bit on the screen? And we'll take public, we'll take some public input. I would, I would ask that, that that we don't have the same thing repeated over and over again. See, if you, as you hear people talk or you have a new issue you want to bring to our attention, you bring it to our attention. But this, this, we do want to hear your thoughts. So if everybody's ready, Nina, you can see if anybody wants to raise their hand and talk to us directly or we certainly would like to hear your comments on this email address that Leila's going to give you here in a little bit. And we'll review all those later.
Okay, great. First, we have Josh.
Okay.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Josh.
This is great. I appreciate everyone's time and effort putting this together. So my name's Josh. I'm actually homeowner in Manzanita. I have a rental, it's permitted, have a small LLC. And I have lived in this community off and on all my life. I, my first job actually was from Steve that owned the golf course and I picked up balls as a kid for him. And so I have seen this, this community evolve. And right now, one thing is I worry from, I, I hear everyone talk of this and I, I have a couple of concerns. I feel like right now, the city of Manzanita is in a little bit of an identity crisis. I feel like I see, I hear, you know, some, several members saying, hey, you know, we're, we're lacking funds. And then I hear, hey, we want to put a, put a cap on the growth. And so that's concerning. I think we need to really establish what is our goals and objectives. Because whether you like it or not, Manzanita is a destination town. The population in suburbia has grown. People want to get out of town, either for the weekend or for the day. And so when you do limit that, I understand you're going to alleviate some of the wear and tear, if you will, on the city. But you're also really limiting the growth because everybody that comes in this town is buying goods and services. They're going to the grocery store. They're, you know, paying for rentals or, you know, to, for the, for the bikes and stuff on the beach. You know, they, they're, they're enjoying our town. And so that concerns me. Well, another thing that concerns me is that we have a large population of elderly that are becoming somewhat disabled in our community. They might have a financial hardship. They might need to use their vacation rental as some, a moneymaker to help fund a spouse that's ill. And so if we do put a cap on it, I think we need to put some sort of exceptions on this. We also need to look at some, maybe the mayor talked about some tax revenue. And I, and you have the small guy like myself that has a little LLC that's permitted. And then you have, I would, I would be curious to see how many rental properties are contracted with management companies? Because I think that they're making, they're not hurting for funds. And that to tax, I, I, I would challenge just the thought, just to throw that, this out here, is to, to maybe tax those companies before you tax the homeowners and our, our, our ta, and our property taxes first. That's a lot to be said. And, and I kind of threw it out everyone, but I, again, I appreciate, I really do appreciate this opportunity. And I do want to be a part of this growth and be part of the solution. But I think Mr. The Tall, if I pronounce that right, I like, who's Steve? Sir, I like, I like the philosophy is like, you can't take away the complete rights of a homeowner. But we need to find that balanced. So clear goals and objectives, maybe clear redefining of our mission statement in the city. More short and, and with goals, the short-term and the long-term goals. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh. A quick answer to one of your questions is 86 of the short-term rental licenses are owner-managed and 171 are managed through an agency. So it's about a one-third to two-thirds split there on that. Do we have anybody else who'd like to make a comment? And please keep your comments down to three minutes if you could, so we get as many people in as we can.
Yeah, next we have Donna Miller.
Okay, hi Donna.
And Donna, you should be able to unmute.
There, am I unmuted?
There you go.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Our city council's mission states they are committed to inform and actively engage residents in identification of solutions to community issues such as our STR problems. Thank you so much for today's steps in doing just this. I have now a couple of questions. Number one is, the STR companies are making lots of money on our rentals. Why can't they enforce the laws? Why do we have to hire somebody to do that? Why can't that be part of their quote, "contract with the city" that they have to enforce these things, you know, that are a pain in so many residents' sides? That's number one. And the second thing is, what is the actual number of STRs, including all the commercial areas? Like Lenida, the C4 areas? I've just heard that up on north now, those new homes are commercial. So all those areas don't have to have, be part of the 17%. So I want to know what the actual number on that is. All, how many STRs do we really have? I mean, how many licenses do we really have?
267 as of the February 8th report that I have here. Steve, do you want to answer the question about the involvement of the property managers? Because I know you dealt with that quite a bit with the, with the group you work with.
Thanks, Mayor. And Donna, that's a good question. You know, from my perspective, the, a number of the management firms do an exceptional job of managing their properties. But as the mayor, and they take great pride in ensuring that the standards that the city has set are maintained. But like any business, not all companies are the same. So you have some that do exceptionally well. You do, you have some that maybe aren't as adept, some that aren't even located in Manzanita, but yet still manage properties. And you have about 33% of the properties that are actually self-managed by property owners who clearly are not here. One of the reasons that I would like to see us not only have the enforcement aspect, but I also would like to see us have a complaint number, which I lobbied for during the process of the work group. And the reason I would like to see that is because I don't know that we have real accurate information on the number of complaints that are actually filed. Because many of those go to short-term rental management companies who handle it. It's in their best interest to make sure that they handle it themselves and there's no real disclosure to the, to the city. So for a lot of reasons, one, I think that many of the short-term rental companies, particularly those that are based here in Manzanita, do a terrific job. But not all of them. And there's also, like I said, one-third of the, of the group that in fact is self-managed. And my own experience, having managed a code enforcement effort in a larger city, you know, it's, it's like if we all self-manage, how fast we drive, you can imagine what the freeway was look like. So, you know, it is what it is.
That makes sense. Yeah. Thank you.
Donna, I just put the slide that I had up with the information you just asked for. So there's 260 total licenses, 25 are in the uncapped zone.
Yeah, right. I saw that. I just wondered, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wondered what that brings the percentage to. It brings it, I think a lot of people are, feel misinformed when it says 17.5%. So when you say 17.5%, are you saying that that includes all the ones that are in the C1 and R4 zones?
Nope, it includes only those that are in the other zones.
Right. So do you, do you have a percentage of including those ones? I mean, I can figure it out. I can, I know how to do that, but I just.
Yeah, so I just mentioned that the number of housing units in those zones is 1,317. 200, 230 is 17 and a half percent. And we have currently in the capped zone, as I mentioned, 235. But five of those are grandfathered in and will not be, they are specific to those specific owners. So when those owners release that permit, it will not, it won't. So when those owners release that permit, it will not, it won't exist anymore. So it goes away. So we have two hundred and thirty that are not grandfathered in. The grandfathered ones are on top of that. So that would bring it up to closer to seventeen point seven five or eighteen percent. But those as part of the bringing in the S R R zone into the capped zone, those, I think Judy can probably chime in here. There was originally fourteen. They have been sort of through attrition removed from the pool. So it's exactly seventeen and a half percent of one thousand three hundred and seventeen total housing units. So the math is good.
Donna, this is Judy. We don't track the number of dwelling units in the uncapped zone because those are outright allowed uses in those zones and they're not capped. So there's never been a reason to track the number of those dwelling units. But that might be something that the water department might be able to provide. But it isn't something that my department has ever been tasked with keeping track of because they're not capped, they're an outright allowed use.
So and I can tell you, a total and inside the entire city is one thousand three hundred and seventy housing units. So that's fifty, fifty-three units in the C one and R four zones.
Oh, okay. So just back to my original question then. Those have a huge impact on everything that we're talking about, the ones in the C one and R four zones. But they're not being counted in quote, the numbers that are impacting the livability and stability of our town. So is council concerned about that? Are they looking at, you know, it's actually more like twenty-one, twenty-two percent of S T Rs?
I feel like what I've heard today is that the freeze will apply to all short term rental permits. So that includes the capped and the uncapped zones. Is that correct, council? Is that what I hear?
I think that's what we're talking about.
Because I think that that is one of the reasons why that we are doing this is because we do see that the impact is not just the residential neighborhoods, it's the city, it's citywide.
Well, as I understand it, the seventeen and a half percent cap applies to the residential areas, not to the commercial area. And here's another thing that people forget, we have seven motels in Manzanita. And they have guests staying there too. And they're not capped in any way. It's a commercial operation.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I think we can take a couple more if we got them out there.
All right, next we have Danielle.
Counsel, everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, hi Danielle.
Hi, so I'm Danielle with Manzanita Beach Getaway Rentals. And I just kind of had a quick question on the, kind of what? I guess the good answer for what brought this up? What, what, what caused this conversation with the city? What is the driving force behind the rental cap conversation and halting it? Does that make sense? Like what, what has caused that conversation to happen? Are we seeing massive complaints? Are we, I guess I'm just trying to get educated on how come this is all coming up?
Want me to try to answer that? I, what, we are getting a lot of concerns from the citizens that live here. We see a lot of building going on, homes and, you know, economic boom that we seem to be in, which will increase the cap possibly disproportionately in some parts of town. That, that's what I'm saying.
I, I think, what, mayor, I also think, hi Danielle. Hi, Danielle was a very active, well, not very active. She was active like everybody else, but a great member of our work group for, since two thousand nineteen. So I thank Danielle. But I do think it's important to suggest that this isn't really a new issue. In fact, I think the mayor mentioned that during some of his remarks. Otherwise, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have had a work group in two thousand nineteen if it weren't an issue that the community was feeling in terms of livability. But I do, I agree with the mayor that driving around town and seeing all the new construction, one has to wonder, okay, you know, what is a threshold of acceptability? How far are we willing to go in terms of people coming into the community, people within the neighborhoods? I think, you know, it's kind of refreshing just to stop and take a timeout and think about what strategies that we might employ to make us, you know, make us a great city as we are and to improve the livability in the specific neighborhoods. You know personally that there's no one on the council that's more impacted by short term rentals than I am personally in my family where we, where we happen to live. So I don't think this is something new or something that suddenly crept up. I think though, that the amount of construction activity in our community has people concerned. And I think this is a great way to respond to that concern and really reflect on where the city needs to, needs to go. So.
Well, there's a, yeah. Thanks, Steve. And, and you know, there's an issue of, that comes that I hear, it's in my mind too, is we have a finite square footage, if I say the city, we have Lenita as our main commercial street. Are we reaching saturation point? Are we reaching capacity? As we keep growing and we got so much growth going on and there's more on the books. Unless the economy slows down, we're going to talk tonight about the parade. I mean, talk about saturation point. I, I frankly think there's a point where we may not be able to do a parade anymore because if it's taking so many people onto Lenita, you can't accommodate them. And we're not, you know, the beauty of that, being able to do this right now, we have licenses available. People aren't using for whatever reason, we don't have a year and a half backlog, we're not cutting anybody off. We're taking a pause, we're going to try to figure out what's going on here. And that's why we're doing it. I hope it helps.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that a lot. Just one other sort of comment, you know, because I am a rental company, there's a lot of stuff being thrown around on social media that rental companies don't care, it's all about benefiting us. It absolutely is not. I would not be on this committee for the short term rental work group if I believed that. I believe in livability. I believe that's a huge responsibility of us rental companies, as is homeowners, to keep the livability great because this is a wonderful community. And so I'm not against the pause at all. I, and I, I'm not going to fight that at all because I think that, that yeah, it would give us time to regroup and really get, get a hold of things. But I think Steve's right when he said the work group has really been working on implementing things so that it does make the livability better. And it takes time for those things to set in. They're not going to change things overnight. But between what the city's done and what the work group has done and, and, you know, obviously with help from council and everything, I think we're headed in the right direction. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dana. You know, I, as mayor, I want to lead the city and lead this council by engaging with everybody and not by shutting every, anybody out. And we obviously have a very diverse community here. We have the full time residents, we're older, we're living here all the time. And then we have the second homeowners, which is a huge group of people who pay property tax and visit down, visit down here quite regularly, certainly during COVID. And then the reality is, we are a destination vacation beach resort. And how do you, how could all three of those groups live together in the same time, in the same town, I should say, together? And at one time, I think at work, people have heard me use the analogy, it's a three-legged cow milking stool. With all three legs are the same and everybody works together within that diverse environment. We're kind of out of whack right now and we're trying to figure out how to put this back together. The community, we have, this is a great place to live and we all have to figure out how to live here together. COVID didn't help. We got cantankerous with the full time people living down here and the second homeowners coming down on weekends because they felt they had the right to and it just got real messy. And I think this is an attempt by all of us here on the council is to try to get us back together again as a community that's working together and trying to solve problems. And that's what we're going to try to do. So, well, that's about twenty-five minutes for the public comment. I don't know that we have to take anymore today. Hopefully people sending your suggestions on that email address. And we've talked a lot about this, we're going to go to work on it unless anybody else has any other comments. Okay. Then guys, we're going to adjourn the workshop and I'm going to see you at six o'clock. You have a chance to go have dinner. We're adjourned.